So, do you need those charts?
That's great.
Well, it's pretty.
(laughing).
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
They all.
Good to see you.
Yeah.
I'm in the other.
I still have.
I got it for five hundred.
Nope.
Still want.
(inaudible).
Good.
See him?
It was.
You would be good.
(inaudible).
Yes.
(inaudible).
(inaudible).
Oh, my goodness.
I'm not that stupid.
I'm just like.
I don't know.
I have always heard of them.
How much should you borrow?
She gets.
I don't.
But why?
(inaudible).
Actually, I'm very glad I'm here.
Just there.
I was like.
For.
I agree.
I think they're dead.
Hi.
I want to say it's actually.
I think it's so good.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Oh, I know.
I think I agree.
It's still.
(inaudible).
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
I like it.
I'm really love it.
Oh, wow.
Sorry.
What you're gonna show?
I can go.
See, I think that's it.
I mean, I think it's.
Pretty good.
The house is coming.
No.
(inaudible).
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry.
I'm serious. Oh, really?
I don't know.
That's what it took, right?
Yeah.
Okay, I call to order the June 20th, 2018 regular business meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. Please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, undervalued, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mrs. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Copeland-Dansby? Mr. Messer? Mr. Morosky?
President.
Mr. Tip? Mr. Davis?
President.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. Okay, so we're gonna, as it appears that we do not have any minutes for today, we're gonna go directly to our presentations. Superintendent Mitchell, please introduce our presentations.
Yes, so I'm very excited and honored to be able to introduce two partners of Cincinnati Public Schools, Dr. Greg Schumlass, who is a medical director, and Tiana Henry is a program manager with Children's Hospital. They have been partnering and working with Cincinnati Public Schools to ensure that our smallest people receive books right to their homes, and they do this before kids even start kindergarten. And so they're gonna have a short presentation, just really reviewing some of the work that they've been doing to support Cincinnati Public Schools as it relates to reading and literature in our schools. So, thank you.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Greg Schumlass. I'm a pediatrician at Children's Hospital. I'm the medical director for our Prescription for Reading program.
And I'm Tiana Henry. I am Outreach Associate Program Manager of both programs, Reach Out and Read and Imagination Library.
And the whole goal of our program is to help kids get ready for kindergarten, and we have some kind of exciting data today that shows that we're maybe making some headway. We've been here before a couple times. The last time was about a year ago, and in the past, we've been called the Imagination Library, and this is the same program. We're just kinda talking about ourselves a little bit differently because we realize that didn't really represent the whole breadth of the program. So, Prescription for Reading is actually a combination of two, the local affiliates of two nationally-known, well-established programs, Reach Out and Read and Imagination Library. Now, the Reach Out and Read component happens at the medical office. At a clinic that practices Reach Out and Read, in addition to all the routine care, children get an extra dose of literacy anticipatory guidance. So, at one of our clinics, every time a young child, zero to five, comes for a checkup, in addition to immunizations and car seat guidance, we also are able to give them a new book to start to build a library. But most importantly, we talk to them about reading and how important it is at such a young age, and we use the book to model shared kind of reading techniques appropriate for that age child. Now, Reach Out and Read tends to operate in clinics that are highly Medicaid, which is the case in Cincinnati. We have Reach Out and Read in over 12, 20 clinics throughout the city, not only Cincinnati Children's, but also Crossroads, Cincinnati Health Department, and a lot of the clinics that touch the underserved. We reach children at about 30,000 visits a year with Reach Out and Read. Now, the Imagination Library is the part that happens at home. The Imagination Library is a book delivery program that sends books straight to the homes of our enrollees once a month from birth until the age of five, so they can end up with this awesome library of 60 books by the end of it. Now, the unique thing in Cincinnati is how we're combining the programs. So, as part of the Reach Out and Read visit, we're signing kids up for the Imagination Library. So, the Imagination Library is great about getting books into the home, but some people feel that it really lacks on the guidance and making sure children are using the books. So, with Reach Out and Read, we can not only reach our target population, the children in need, we can also touch base with them over time and make sure we have the right address and talk to them about reading, make sure they're getting their books and still using them. So hopefully, by combining the two programs, they'll be more powerful than either program alone. Now, we sent our first books out in September of 2015 to a couple hundred enrollees. By December of 2016, we were up to 8,500, and we currently have 9,800 active Imagination Library enrollees. We're kind of starting to plateau now. We think about 10,000 is gonna be our steady state. Every month, we have five-year-olds that graduate from the program, so we've served over 12,700 children so far, and we've sent out about a quarter million books into the community. Now, on top of that, we're just not sending out the books. You have to remember, Reach Out and Read goes all the time, so 30,000 visits a year, we're touching base with these children to make sure we have their address and to really encourage them to read their books and talk about child development. In the past, we know from our surveys that we're changing these families at home. We know that they're reading more. We know that they're more engaged about books, but this is the first time we have some objective data to kind of present for you. So, we were able to look at the kindergarten readiness scores of about 150 of our Imagination Library participants in the last school year, the 2016-2017, and about 270 of our children this year, the 2017-18 school year. Now, the children in the 2016 school year were only exposed to the program about six months. We don't really expect much effect at that point, so we're kind of looking at that as more of our control group, whereas the cohort this year participated in the program about a year and a half, so we would hope to start to see some effect. So, in the 2016 scores, you can see that our Imagination Library cohort actually did worse than the CPS cohort in general. So, what you see is the on-track and the not-on-track literacy scores from the kindergarten readiness test. Our Imagination Library kids were about 42.9%, where CPS-at-large was almost at 58%. This isn't too surprising for us, knowing that our children are coming from the poorest neighborhoods in Cincinnati, and that's about a 15% difference in the on-track scores. So, the exciting thing is this year, in 2017, while we still lag behind with our Imagination Library cohort at 50% versus 58%, we've made an 8% improvement in the children that are on track, and now there's about an 8% difference between our group and the CPS-at-large. So, while we only looked at, were able to look at about 270 scores for this year, there were actually 500 children enrolled, so if we can extrapolate that percentage, we've pulled about 40 kids up from the not-on-track to the on-track score. So hopefully, down the road, this will save a lot of time and money and remediation and hopefully help their grade reading scores.
So, you've heard a lot of the nuts and bolts and some of the numbers we have involved, but we wanna also let you know that one of the things that we've discovered is that the parents are really engaged in a program. So, when I say engaged, I mean, they, when they move, they report that they've moved. So, we are able to keep a growing address of parents, no matter where they go, they wanna keep getting their books. So, they give us a call, they send us an email, so we're able to really get a sense of our mobile population. They are making sure that they change their address to continue to receive their books, so that's one thing we're capturing. We also have a lot of community outreach, and we are available for parents if they need anything, questions, or also have a partnership with the Literacy Network if they ever have issues with reading. If there's any more questions?
So, we'll again look at the scores this fall with the incoming, and so next time we're here, hopefully, we have new data that continues to show that trend.
Yes.
Just, I remember the, I guess, the earliest presentation, and I was, and I think we all got involved with the ability that you have to follow with our very mobile population, and I, is there some, obviously, if we know who CPS and who, you know, whatever, may not be, then do we have a way, is it to, to use your information to better our own contacts and communication with our mobile population, since it's a sort of a health thing and a reading thing, too?
Yes, we, we can use our information to help the school send out information about kindergarten and also use the addresses if we can help geolocate and see which catchment area they might be in for their incoming school. Those are partnerships which, yeah, we hope to kind of begin.
But we really, if we, you know, if we are doing it, to keep doing it, and if we aren't, do it, and then if we are doing it, do it really better, because I know the mobility piece, especially for the littlest people, is a problem for all of us in all of our schools. So, that would be great to have that kind of, and we obviously have a wonderful partnership. It'd be great to use it in that way, particularly with our customer service and our enrollment base. Thanks so much.
Yeah, we're working on some mobility data to get a better idea of how much people move, and we are working with some people through the schools about trying to figure out where these children live. Unfortunately, it's by street address, so it's not as easy as it would seem to, to category as everybody.
Yes. Mrs. Bates wanted to comment or has a question, but I just wanna remind us that we wanna make sure they get through the presentation as well, so if it's a burning question.
No, no.
Ask now. If it can wait.
No, we are. That's.
Are you done?
Yep.
Oh, I didn't hear that part. Okay.
Sorry, sorry.
Okay, Mrs. Bates?
What is the outreach to the homeless population?
We do have a partnership with the Salvation Army, and we have received, we've given them books, returned books, and we are looking at ways, because they move, so they are getting their books in certain shelters.
Okay, so you're sending them to the shelters?
Mm-hmm. But they can definitely sign up after they move, because a lot of them come to our clinics, so they're able to sign up to, to the program and keep it going. But we are polluting, making sure that they have books as well. They have bookshelves now in a partnership to continue to get those kids, and we don't penalize them if they move around. They still stay in the program.
Yes. Mr. Morosky?
Thank you. I just wanted to say a couple things. First, as an employee of Cincinnati Children's, this is like, very happy to see this, and it's certainly very important, because we all know health and education are part and parcel of one another. And then something else I was gonna say that Ms. Bates sort of inspired, regarding reaching kids experiencing homelessness in the district, Salvation Army does great work, and there are a couple other partners that I would be willing to connect you with that could help broaden your reach if you, if you want.
Yeah, definitely.
Yes, other questions or comments? I do have just one question. It's almost a follow-up to Ms. Bolton's question. Can, and I remember the last presentation that you did as well. Can you remind us again how families are identified in terms of their eligibility for this program?
So, the Imagination Library eligibility is by zip code. We have all the zip codes that encompass Cincinnati Public School District. The zip codes aren't perfect, so there's some that are a little bit in, a lot out, but it's only by zip code. Otherwise, there's no other eligibility requirements. By the fact that we recruit through Reach Out and Read, we have a very high percentage of Medicaid children. It's over 90% that are in the program.
Somehow, I guess I'm believing, and I may be wrong, I have a perception that they come in contact with you initially because of a hospital visit or something?
So, this is at all of our primary care clinics, so we're seeing these kids at their primary care visit.
The 11, you gotcha. I did hear that. Thank you.
At the Children's Hospital Primary Care, Cincinnati Health Department, so just whenever they come to the doctor for their visit, and most kids show up sometime between zero and five, so we capture them there.
Thank you for that clarification. Other questions and comments? We thank you again for your presentation, and we look forward again at some time in the future to hearing more about how successful this program is and the progress that you're making.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next presentation is our own Jennifer Wagner, and this is an update on the budget process.
So, good morning.
Morning.
Yes, I think it's still morning. So, today's presentation is to, is to give you an update on many of the questions and concerns that you had shared during the first draft of presentation on the budget. One of the questions that was asked was about the personnel and the cost of the base personnel in the schools. And so, as you can see on this chart, this is the general fund and the school I pull added together. So, example, we have 2,328 teacher, classroom teachers that with their salary benefits, on an average salary basis, is $214 million. I won't read all the different positions to you, but for a total of 3,700 bodies in the schools that operate in the schools to serve our children, that costs the district about $277 million. In anticipation of knowing, of being asked what kind of teachers it look like, here's a breakdown, a graphic breakdown of the, how that 2,300 teaching staff looks like. So, we have 629 pre-K3 teachers, 328 four-to-six, 625 seven-to-12. And then it shows you the difference between our self-contained specialized classrooms, preschool disability, and then some of the program non-load-bearing positions are the ones that are added on through equity through their academic programs, like gifted and foreign language and other kinds of specialists. And then we have inclusion teachers and English language learners teaching. So, I was also asked about the positions that are in that middle section of the budget that are supporting students directly, but they're centrally budgeted. So, for example, we had 217 custodians that work in the buildings, but they're budgeted centrally. 10 security, and that includes two new security officers based on the task force, security task force analysis. 101 crossing guards that are city employees, as we've been discussing in the most recent times. There are 17 technology techs that are funded out of the My Tomorrow budget to help with the increase in student devices. I think we're up to about 40,000 devices now. And new to this budget this year are five assistant principals focused on instruction, a high school principal-coach, an advisory coach, and some blended learning teachers. So, in anticipation of being asked about changes in the central office budgets, most of the changes are related to strategic initiatives, so new people to help implement the strategic initiatives, or funding changes, because our federal funds are shrinking, and so some bodies have to come back to the general fund. But like, one example is talent development is a new initiative. It kind of, sort of started this current year, but it's gonna be full-blown next year with three new positions, identified up there as a talent acquisition manager, professional development manager, and a transformation and culture manager. School, school culture and safety is an example. We added one manager, but then the other position that looks like it's an increase to that budget is really coming out of somebody else's budget and being reclassified as the school social worker. The Student Activities Department wants to add another coordinator to help with all the increased activities of clubs and athletes, athletics, excuse me. The Secondary Assistant Education is the high school assistant superintendent. Bill Miles has taken over that role, so we have not going to fill that position for this year, but we've supplemented that with a high school coach, principal coach. Early childhood and Cincinnati Preschool Promise were funding issues. Cincinnati Preschool Promise, last year, we anticipated a growth in special education positions and community coordinator positions that the community coordinator, the preschool promise staff took over, so we didn't need to fund those positions this year, and we are only adding special education positions as the data comes. We just didn't know what to anticipate last year, because it was our first year serving those children, and so that's why that looks like a high negative. And then the next two lines are increases to the Family and Community Engagement Department. They budget separately between customer relations, the customer service, and family communications and public affairs. So, you can see that we've invested in that department. Research and evaluation has reinstated the EMIS manager that was cut about five years ago. Information Technology, while it looks like it's an add of three people, they're converted from contracted employees, which is saving the district money. So, we're starting to, as the culture 10, 15 years ago started outsourcing everything just across the country, we're starting to reevaluate whether the outsourced contracts are beneficial financially to the district versus hiring employees. The treasures, because we don't have any new employees in the treasure, they're simply a law change, they're federal funds, that we can't directly allocate accounting positions to the federal funds, so those FTEs came back to the general fund, and then we recoup that money through indirect costs. Facility had some changes with custo, they had a growth in custodians, because we expanded buildings and grade levels, and it was more students to clean up after. They added a .6 fire and safety coordinator that was a contractor, they converted it to an employee, part-time employee, and increased in heating and air conditioning tech. The two nighttime purchase, plan operators, excuse me, were centrally budgeted, but they're now in the school's budget, so it looks like a reduction there. And transportation is also not an increase to the budget, it's just a shifting between a router that was up in the school support section, they converted that position to an accounting tech to help with their billing issues, and that is now in the administration, central administration section, so it just shifted sections. Human Resources added six bodies, really, three for CFOP, but they negotiated in their last contract to add three clerical resource team members, and then through CFT, they agreed to add three district-wide teacher mentors to the teacher evaluation team. So, one question from Monday night was about a preschool expansion and how they compared to the quality deserts, and Ms. Brodenax is gonna come up and help me with that.
I'll just take you through the slide very quickly. So, you'll see the blue dots are CPS site locations across our district. The community provider sites are the true CPP community providers, rated high-quality, and you can see the red dots are expansion areas from last year. What I will say and wanna take you through a little bit is the term of desert and scarcity. We did work off of the original RAND report, and when RAND did their report, they identified those some areas that we defined as deserts or scarcity in the sense that if there was a 75% uptake, there still would not be enough quality seats. So, the good news to that is it also seemed to match some of our areas as well, so I'll just name some of those neighborhoods, because the highlights do match some of our expansions. Westwood was identified as scarcity. We did expand in that area. Clifton was also identified in RAND as scarcity or desert, and we did expand there. East Walnut Hills was originally identified in RAND as scarcity or desert, and we added a classroom there at Douglas, Winton Hills, and Hartwell. So, we did use the original research and landscape reports. There are some areas that were identified in which expansion has not occurred because of space issues, and those are East and West Price Hill areas, West Side, Mount Aerie, and Mount Washington. So, the report was used for us and matched to our intake process of monitoring demand to determine expansion, and hopefully, that help provides some of the information for that.
Thank you. So, now, Ms. Bunty's gonna help, there were questions that you asked about Student Services' breakdown and the cost of mental health, and Ms. Bunty's giving you an extra handout that I believe was a board presentation recently, and so she's gonna walk you through the next couple slides.
Good morning, everyone. It's nice to see you. So, as we know, Student Services provides support to about 15,000 students, so not only students who have disabilities, but also students who are English learners and students who are gifted. Also, within the Department of Student Services, we have the nursing services for all of our students across the district. So, both the Board of Health contract sits within the Department of Student Services and our Student Health Assistance, which we added a few years ago to provide basic health care for our students within the district. And I, as a reminder, many of you know this chapter and verse, but it is important, I think, to take a moment to just remind ourselves that all of our kids with disabilities, their eligibility is determined by federal definition and federal process. We are annually audited in a glorious process through the Ohio Department of Education each and every year for adherence to those federal and state procedures, particularly around over-identification and compliance. So, a lot of times, you'll hear folks say, well, that child needs an IEP. It isn't that simple, as, as we know, that folks have to, students have to meet very specific criteria in order to be determined eligible for services. In addition to monitoring over-identification and compliance, there are 15 indicators of performance that we are required to meet annually for the Ohio Department of Education, and in addition, the staffing ratios that we use in the Department of Student Services are driven by ODE. So, it's a little bit different than our staffing for other areas of our organization, which are driven by the CBA. We use the ODE language, which has been dropped into our collective bargaining agreement, and we have to, by state regs, maintain those ratios. So, I know it was, a specific question was asked around line-by-line funding for Student Services, so we can walk through this relatively quickly, but because of the high percentage of students at Rose Lawn who have physical disabilities, we did include a nurse at Rose Lawn several years ago, so there's a full-time nurse specifically devoted to that, to the students there. In addition to supporting the students with disabilities, she also supports the general ed population. We have 29 FTEs of LPNs, who, which breaks out to 32 employees, because some of them are budgeted at different weights. The SHAs, we already talked about. We know our related services providers are an important part of the services we provide to students with disabilities. So, you can see our occupational therapists, our physical therapists, our speech and language folks, our psychs, and our audiologists, and our sign language interpreters. Again, those are all formulaic through Ohio Department of Education in terms of what we are required to. Again, those are all formulaic through Ohio Department of Education in terms of what we are required to provide in terms of ratio. We also have several supplemental service teachers. We have students in our district who are visually impaired, hearing impaired, who require assistive technology. Those folks are itinerant and they go from building to building to serve the students. We also have a mobility therapist for our students who are visually impaired, who helps them orient within buildings and within the community. And in addition, we have a brailer who obviously provides braille support for those students who need it. We have 11 English, English as a second language teachers. And then in addition, we have several other intervention specialists who serve our preschool folks. Our paraprofessionals for our students with special needs, that number is not only our one-to-one paras, which we have several of obviously, but in addition, it is our unit paras that serve our specialized classrooms. We also have our ESL paraprofessionals who work under the direction of our ESL teachers. And an assistant school community coordinator who helps us with foreign language translation needs. Our administrators who service the Department of Student Services and a contingency line. So that represents the total personnel cost within the department. It's roughly 28 million. If you look at the contract costs, and I know that you all know this because of our contract talks every year, but to be able to talk again about the Board of Health, as we already discussed, progressives helps provide subs for our related services people when they go out on maternity leave or medical leave because we're required by law to provide those services in their absence or to provide compensatory services for each minute that was lost. True Staff and Western are subs for our paraprofessionals. Lighthouse Youth Folk, or the Lighthouse Youth Services are folks who come in and provide highly skilled support for students who may be aggressive or have, who require highly specially trained folks to support them. Our ESL coaches support our students and I think the rest are. Physical therapy services is collaboration with our Children's Hospital, physical therapists. And then the evaluations are the psychometrics that we use on an annual basis for testing and evaluation. So non-personnel adds up to about 3.8. Did I skip a slide, Jen? Yes. So the other pieces then are the actual data management services software. How we write our IEP ETRs and anything else that ends in, has an acronym. It also includes the Medicaid billing system within it. That's about $74,000. And then the other pieces are delineated there. So the central office total for that is about 302. We talked about professional services and some personnel for then the 32 million total. I know that it was requested to have examination of mental health services that are provided across the district. So you have a long sheet that was given to you with an overview. If you wish, I can provide additional information to any of those supports as well.
So another question from last Monday night or the last board meeting was the breakdown of the transportation services. So we've shown you on the top line, the number of students that are projected to, for CPS charter schools and non-publics. What the yellow costs, yellow bus costs, metro costs are. The disabled lines, I couldn't allocate between the three entities, so I just left it in the total. Universal transportation systems, the vans, the parent reimbursements for non-public or non-CPS parents. So those are, it's payment in lieu of providing transportation. The McKinney Vento, which supports our homeless population. And then we have some busing costs that support clubs and enrichment activities like the what's it, outdoor something adventure? And then about $2 million of fuel. So we saved money when we started buying fuel for the busing company because we get, we're tax exempt. And then we get a reimbursement, so we can buy it cheaper than they do. So for a total projected budget for next year of $42 million. This is the centralized portion of the transportation. Where's three routers, four specialists and accountants, four administrative people for a total of 12. And then a total transportation budget combined to this school, the support portion and the central office portion of 43. So I was asked about revenue, Ms. Bolton. So here's an example of trying to answer your question for you. So last year, we adopted a budget in June 30, or June, at the end of June, of 571 estimated revenues in the general fund. In October, we revised that upward by about $10 million because of the increase in TIF and CRA revenues. Our state foundation went up because of our enrollment went up. And property values also went up with the reevaluation. So we were collecting more. Then in May, we revised it upward again. If you remember during the last, the May forecast presentation, we actually collected, because of the tax bill changes, we collected $9 million earlier than we would normally do it. So in August, we would have collected $9 million, but we got it this year instead. So next year's revenue will be smaller because we collected early. So through June 14th, when I put this slide together, we had already collected 592 million. So we were just a million shy of our forecast for the year. And based on some reports I saw yesterday, we're just over 592. So next year's revenues in comparison are at 587 because we adjusted for those early collections and the capped revenue on state foundation formula. You asked me for, asked me for historical comparisons from the budget to the last two to three years and I'm still working on it. I just couldn't get it all done by today's presentation, so acknowledging that it's still in progress. There was another question about federal funds or other funds other than general funds. So this is a slide of the federal funds. The significance of the blue versus the black text is the blue is still our projection. We're still waiting on allocations on those funds. For example, we haven't heard what the actual allocation for next year for DeGlink and neglected idea B and so forth. So I'm showing you what our projection is. In comparison to how much non-public takes off the top and what CPS is available to spend. And then the last column on the right is what the fiscal year, current year allocations were. So for example, Title I, we received 19 million on the CPS versus next year, we're projected to have 14.5, I mean 18.5, excuse me. Are you following me? On that top line, out of the $22 million total allocation, the non-public schools get 3.8 million of it. CPS will get 18.5. And this year comparatively speaking, we only got 19. So it's a $500,000 loss on that line. Second page of that shows you that we are projecting 54 and a half million dollars of federal funds. And comparatively speaking, CPS will receive 38 million of it and compared to the 41 million. So it's about a three and a half million dollar loss in federal funding for us, just the CPS side. And I just wanted to point out the auxiliary line is nine and a half million dollars. That goes straight to the, to the non-public schools, to auxiliary funds. CPS doesn't touch that, it's just passed through funding. So that was, I believe, all the questions and follow-up items from that budget presentation. We are still diligently trying to close that gap on the general fund target. And so Monday night, we will be presenting the final draft of that. We have three days to get it done. So can I answer any questions for you?
Questions? Ms. Bolton?
I have a few to get us started. Thank you so much, everybody. It really, I think this really helps and it really clears many questions up and I deeply appreciate it. I have, I have them and I hope I can kind of remember. One, on the preschool, this chart doesn't include where we are or does it expand this year, this coming year?
Yes, Ms. Brodnecks.
For this one, and that's the
Right. So one of the things that we're doing is we will be adding a seat for sure at Gamble. We will be extending at Sailor Park based on the community's interest in expanding there. We are revisiting Chase originally. We thought there may not be room at Chase, but we are certainly revisiting that largely because of community interest there as well. And the fourth location to add seats is to be determined because we're trying to be really creative in looking at what the data tells us, right? We know where scarcity still exists, but it's also the places of demand, but it's also the places with lack of space. So that's a little trickier on the fourth.
So for, if I might, 18 to 19. He says Chase Sailor, possibly Chase Sailor Park, one to be determined, what was the other one?
Gamble will add an additional room.
Does that gamble, then that includes the ones that were over as well as an additional unit?
Yes, you are correct. And then the fourth location, we just are really still looking at in order to meet what we know to be demand and scarcity, but working with space issues.
So the, go ahead. The question around space, clarify, when you say lack of space, are you talking about within schools? Are you looking outside, like in the rec centers?
Open to all of those options. We just know, for example, West Side and Mount Erie in particular are areas that we, we still need to do some work and obviously working with our partners of preschool promise that what could we do with some of those community providers and immediately working on some uptake? Just in order, we really have high demand in those areas, high demand.
Okay. Ms. Bolton, hand that Ms. Bates follows.
Yeah, just to follow up on that one. And maybe as we look at the available, the development of cans for the Clifton School, once again, those boundary lines for cans, for Winton Hills, for Pleasant Hill, for Mount Erie and maybe even Chase. If they were drawn by the neighborhoods, and I know that what overcrowd probably Winton Hills is the first thing I've heard about. But College Hill is somewhat divided, Mount Erie is somewhat divided, Chase is a pretty natural neighborhood boundary. Their attendance boundary, but I, I think as we look at that, you might be able to find some space as we readjust some of those northern whatever, especially since we've got, you know, Carthage also in the mix and possibly Jacob Center in some way, shape or form. So I'm just looking at one region and there's plenty of regions to look at. But so will four new classes be enough for preschool, four new units?
So four classrooms would represent 80 students. There, there is the potential regarding a space on the west side that we'll be exploring next week. We have a date set next week, thanks to Mr. Morowski putting us in contact with someone who has some potential space for us. I will say that we have talked about, so we did follow up on the board's assignment around redistricting. As we talked about it yesterday with the assistant soup, and we'll continue to look at that. And we'll involve Sarah Trimble Oliver in that work. But to Mrs. Brodnecks' point, the places in which there are deserts, we physically do not have any space in a CPS building and don't have potential partners in those areas as of right this moment. There is a potential consideration for the west side of town and again, we're exploring that next week.
Thank you. Ms. Bates?
Are we continuing to pursue the space at the Mount Erie Recreation Center?
Yes, we are continuing that as well. That's where the fourth location is still to be determined because we are exploring multiple options.
Where is the Mount Erie Recreation Center? Are we confusing it with College Hills or? No, there's one.
I'm trying to think, I don't, I'm not quite sure where it is.
I don't either.
The only one that I'm aware of is the one in College Hill, which is near Aiken. So I'm not really sure which facility Ms. Bates is referring to.
My understanding of where the closest one is to Mount Erie. It's a pretty good distance away too.
Actually not physically close to the school, but where
It's on Belmont, right.
Well, that's right.
You are correct. It is not close to Mount Erie School.
Some of the universe.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Mr. Morowski?
I'll start with the preschool and then kind of back up from there. So regarding the preschool expansion, I mean, everything's really exciting over there on the west side. And I just want to reiterate what Ms. Bolton was saying and what we've talked about in our committee meetings that looking at these true neighborhood lines, I think, might be some low hanging fruit to help with some of this. But then also, I guess it's kind of, it's more of a question. So what's, what's with this glaring gap on the east side? Is it, is it people aren't sending their kids to our preschools or, because that is a huge gap over Mount Washington and Mount Lookout in that whole area? Is there, are we, so my question, I guess it's two questions. One, why is that so massive? And two, are we talking about that too?
We are talking about that too. To help answer that question, there is a glaring gap and there's a reason for that. There is some historical reasons for that. In the past, when we looked at the funding that we had available as well as space, as well as schools identified as priority schools, academic priority schools. Originally, those areas weren't given preschool units. We've continued to expand, right? Because we continue to bring in new revenue for preschool programming. But again, we stay true to tradition, trying to match strategically with high demand areas, matched with schools that we thought could benefit the most. And we still struggle because Mount Erie was on the list of scarcity and desert. But there's also not enough space to expand physically at the Mount Erie School. And there's also not a lot of providers yet in that area. So it is on our list, it's been recognized on our list as a place of interest. But there's a little historical vaccine as to why there's been some pretty glaring deficits over time.
Okay. Is any, and this might be too much and I apologize, but does any of it have anything to do with preschools that are literally that far outside of our boundaries in Anderson and is?
Yeah, that would be something I would have to look into. I haven't really examined beyond CPS lines in all transparency.
Appreciate it.
Sure.
Not quite sorry. No, no, you're fine. The, the other question I had, all of the titles, this is really awesome, by the way, Ms. Wagner, all the different broken down like this by position. I just had a question for my own notification because I'm extremely interested by, in talent development, the transformation and culture person. Who is that person and what will they do?
Great question.
Thank you.
I should learn how to walk faster. So talent development, we are very excited about that work as well. Transformation and culture really speaks to employee experience. And what we're going to do to be able to ensure that when our folks come to work every day, that they are having an experience that's a positive one. Because we believe that happy employees lead to happy children. And so we're really encouraged by the work ahead. We are in the process of hiring folks for those roles. We currently have a person who's working closely with us, who is a consultant, who is with infinite potential and has really been helping to assist in guiding the work around role descriptions and what the job responsibilities could look like.
That makes me really happy to hear that happiness quotient is really important to your point, especially when you're working with something as important as kids. So thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Bates?
Just one more follow-up question on preschool. Does Riverview East not have preschool?
Heather, you actually has one with CPLC and one with CPS. And currently it is meeting the demand thus far in that area.
Ms. Bolton?
An east side question, I think some of us saw the, the information, whether Facebook or through the district, I can't remember. But one of our, one of our folks came up But one of our, one of our folks came up with the fact, or an article about the twelve communities that are growing. And of the ten, there were ten of the twelve were in Cincinnati Public School District neighborhoods. And I think all ten of them were on the east side. And very disproportionately, younger people, early marrieds, singles, what have you. So this, this vacancy over here is kind of, would become more important, I think, in the very near future. Another thing about Mount Airy overcrowded is a number of the College Hill kids go to Mount Airy. I mean, it's divided almost by Hamilton Avenue. So again, some of this, to Mr. Morowski's point, we're going to do a duet on this neighborhood boundary piece. But if you start looking at that, even if you start looking at some of the, of our magnets, there are now some, you know, whisperings of some magnets that would like to be neighborhood schools. So it'd be interesting to take that up. Just a couple of quick ones on the three million decline in federal funds. That's taking into consideration what they are sending us, and you know it? Or it's, is it, are we taking economic?
That is combined of what they've told us we're having, the final allocations versus what we're waiting to hear, but we're projecting what we think it's going to be. So it's still, it's still a change.
That's still a projection, and you truly know, that's right. And just for future references on these charts, when we say this non-public, what does that include when we say non-public?
Private parochial.
Okay. The reason I say that is that parochial people don't think non-public means them. You have to say parochial so that, again, when we get ready for these levies and these renewals, people understand that we are busing their kids, and it's a, it's a cost. So I think it would be better just, I know it's easier on the chart and whatever, and it makes sense to do what you've done. But I, I think from a PR piece, I think that would be helpful.
Thank you. So just for everybody's identification, there's probably about ninety-five hundred children in our private parochial schools.
Other, other questions? I do have one clarification needed. I just want to make sure I heard this right. On Cincinnati Preschool Promise, where there is, those positions, which were originally going to be paid for by the district, are now under the preschool budget?
So I apologize if I wasn't clear about that. Last year, we created those positions because we anticipated the need. So they were budgeted for last year, but they were not filled. Some of those roles.
Within CPS, within our budget.
There were CPS employees, yes. But we did not fill them. Some of those roles, the community support, been the outreach and all that kind of stuff, the CPP people did that work for themselves. We didn't have to provide for them, so that's why we didn't fill those roles. So we just took them out of the budget.
Yes, thank you, because actually, that was going to be my second question. Are, do they have positions that function, that do the work that, that was needed at that time? And, and, and you may, maybe Ms. Bratnax knows, how is that working? I mean, you know, is that going well? Are they able to get accomplished what they had initially talked about in terms of identifying students with special needs?
Right, so just to provide some clarity on that. So I think a little bit of the confusion is, we did set aside kind of, in the general fund specifically, Cincinnati Preschool Promise, so that we were constantly looking at that section of revenue. And in terms of the special education collectively, if you'll remember, that was one of the points that Cincinnati Preschool Promise Board had great interest in, in making sure that, one, that the children were getting served and we were meeting the needs, but that we were also conscious of not overstaffing. And happy to report at this time, it did work out. We had the positions that we needed at that time to service the kids and preschool expansion. And moving forward, we've already added a few additional because the data did show that because of preschool expansion, both in CPS and in CPP, we would need to add additional, and that has been rectified as well. So that piece is solved.
Great.
Correct.
Thank you. Are there other questions or comments? Okay, once again, Ms. Wagner, thank you. The formatting of the program was very easy to read and digest, so we appreciate your work on changing it to help us better understand.
Of course.
And thank you, Ms. Bratnax and Ms. Bunty, also, for your presentations. Okay, so moving on to the next agenda item under Board Matters. If you have the agenda that doesn't have any items, we did sort of a last-minute added item. And so, do you have? Oh, okay. So Ms. Bolton, you introduced that, so would you?
Under Board Matters?
Under Board Matters.
Oh, yeah, okay. Yes, just, how shall I say it? Looking at the, our agendas and having not quite the history that Ms. Bates has, but I, I can remember when we moved Hearing the Public from right at the beginning, after minutes, to later. I think it happened frankly during the FMP controversy and build-out because I think there was, at least one of our members felt strongly that the, the people that were here could better understand what we were doing if they would see some of the presentations and what have you, and see with how the board functions. So I was just looking at the agenda piece, and I noticed we also talked about the length. And so in the process of that, I, I really thought that maybe it would be good to rethink probably the whole agenda and what we do and what we don't. We've added board members, do we still need inquiry? But in that framework, probably talk about the, and I think we mentioned it last, last time we met, where the president and the, and the superintendent, and certainly the treasurer, could meet to figure out the year-long presentation as to what helps the board do its work. I mean, sometimes we have presentations just to be sure to show how well we're doing or to, to highlight a partner. But when we do consider that this board, more than most that I can remember, is very interested in doing the public's business in public, and we do like to deliberate and talk, if we can try to always plan that there's one presentation when possible, but more particularly that we know in advance, sort of, what the administration needs us to be informed about, what we have interest in, like I have an interest in, you know, the, the health piece or something. If we could submit to you, Madam President, things that would be of interest to us for a presentation that we feel like we need more help, whether it's these boundary lines things or, I mean, whatever it would be, the health of the kids, security, safety, whatever, it'd be great if we had a way, a process to submit ideas to you, which I think we have informally.
Yes.
And, and you adhere to it, and I appreciate that. But then also for you and the superintendent, and perhaps you do kind of go through and figure out, not just by the board's map, what we need to know on a particular month, but other things that would help us. I mean, looking at the strategic planning process. The superintendent contributed some interesting stuff at the, that committee, our first committee meeting, about what was the perspective of the administration. Or maybe somebody coming in and talking about what the future really is regionally, so that we get that information. So I just think that there's an opportunity for us to have a good talk with one another and through you and to the superintendent and treasurer, how we can better plan what presentations we have and when we have them.
Yes.
And that's not a criticism?
No, I don't, I don't take that as a criticism. I, I, I'm more than willing, as I stated, as I put my memo out, I'm more than willing to work to meet the needs of the board. And when I say the board, recognizing that everybody has sort of individual needs or desires, it becomes incumbent upon us to really think clearly about what it is we want to see happen. And it's not based on individual things. That's, that's what the point was. Ms. Bates?
Well, kind of to follow up on that, we have a statutory requirement as board members to prescribe curriculum. And I would, and that would be a full board, not just interest, it's our duty. And I would suggest that at every board meeting, we have a curriculum presentation. We know that we have Vision 2020, and we know the names of these curricula, curriculi. It's been a long time since I took Latin.
Curriculum.
Is it feminine or? And, but I don't, when people say, what's the difference between Walnut and Spencer? I'm there, one's AP, one's project-based. That's about all I know, except I know more about Walnut because my kids went there. But I believe it's our duty to understand and know the curriculum and not just an interest. So I believe that that's a priority and should be part of all of the board meeting's presentations in some way. And in more detail than just an overview, but, you know, a, a look at the curriculum, you know, what? And, and some of this could be in writing. We don't necessarily have to go through grade one, grade two, grade three. But to at least let us know what, you know, environmental sciences entail, you know. I, I believe that that's our duty, and that should be included in the agenda as a presentation item on a regular basis.
Yes, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, and this administration has been particularly open to involving the board, as you've seen with social studies and with the fine arts and what have you. And we have almost a monthly sort of rotation of curricula in, in student achievement. But more particularly, I think you're right, and I know I've listened to you talk about that for a number of years, and I, I feel really good about where this administration is in, in sharing and educating us and listening to some of our concerns. So that would make sense. It's next to finance, it's our one and two, job one and two.
And, and I'm happy that we're having this conversation in a very honest, transparent way. The issue that I think that was presented last, at the last meeting, had to do with the efficiency of the operation of the meeting in terms of time, because we were here for a long time. My position is, if you take care of business, sometimes it takes you longer, sometimes it doesn't. And I do agree that we could do some things with the agenda such that we are able to facilitate the meeting in a more, within a more reasonable timeframe. I'm more than willing to work with the board and, and with the superintendent and treasurer around how we do that. I'm going to add another thing to that, to this discussion. And it has to do realistically with the number of assignments that we give. I mean, it's things like that that are very cumbersome for, for all of us. And, and it's not that we don't believe that administration, well, I happen to believe that sometimes when we put them on overload, possibly, that we don't get to do the other things that we want to do. So it's about managing how we do, how we get the work done. And so I think this opportunity, and thank you so much for presenting it, but I think this is an opportunity for us to really do a full-scope review of how we develop this agenda. And I'm, I'm looking forward to it. I think we'll come up with something that makes sense and is comfortable for everybody. That's what my hope is. Ms. Bolton?
Could I, could I also, like, looking back, the reason we even did inquiries and updates was that this would now be eight years ago that got introduced, or six or seven, I forget what it would be. It's, you know, it's eight, it's got to be eight. We did that because we used to have something called other business.
Yes.
And then the other business lasted for forty-five minutes, and you never knew what it was going to be. So part of the problem, when we publish an agenda, we need to have the item there. Because that's in fairness to the public to know what's going to be and the administration.
Yes, if you've noticed, I've actually started doing that. In turn, but I haven't really reached out to board members and said.
Right.
You know, but sometimes, when I, when you're asked to identify board matters, I might either call you or write to and say, is this really a board matter or an inquiry and update? And if it is, it goes under, I think that's, that's a great.
And I think there's a room there to kind of talk about just having one of those, one way or the other, and noticing it. But also, I, I know two years ago, we were concerned that we weren't really presenting anything from the committee work. And now that I think the committees are really doing a lot of deep dive and heavy lifting, and the administration is just so forthcoming in those committee meetings, and certainly until we start broadcasting or streaming them, which we can rethink all we want. But it would seem to me that we haven't met, we haven't done what we wanted to do, which was share more about what's going on in the committees. And then the other piece is the, the update. It might help us all to expedite more things if literally the superintendent and the treasurer, besides their recommendation and their, their report, each had an update, rather than, I mean, don't take it personally, but telling us good news or, God forbid, telling us somebody's died. It's, if it was really, hey, this is happening in the treasurer, this is a follow-up from a couple of months, I think it would give them more of an opportunity to guide us and educate us, as well as kind of keep a dial all going. Because they both like to tell us stuff.
Yeah, okay. Well, again, I.
Let's rethink.
I, I would love to, to work with that, with the board and the superintendent and treasurer. So if you want to make that a formal, look, here I go. A formal assignment, then we'll do that.
We're going to make you make the assignments.
Okay. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay. Any kudos? And the kudo man left.
I have a retirement.
Yes, I'm getting there. Okay. Okay, Ms. Bates, retirement?
We have one staff member to acknowledge today who's retiring. Lisa K. Adair has been one of our teachers, and she is retiring. And we want to let her know that we appreciate her service and thank her very much and wish her well in the future.
Thank you. Okay, we are now at the item on, on our agenda for Hearing the Public. Each speaker has three minutes to speak, and Mrs. Wagner will be our timekeeper. When the buzzer goes off, your three minutes are up. Please refrain from discussing any personnel items. When your name is called, please come to the podium to speak. Our first and only speaker is Marlena Brookfield.
Hello again. God, this thing always reminds me of how short I am. So once again, I think the last time, I want to bring up the LSDMC policy and manual revisions. We had the district LSDMC meeting back in April. I was there with the chair from Dater High School and a whole group of other members, awesome people. There were quite a few criticisms and objections raised to some of the revisions. I'm sure you're all aware of some of my pet ones. And if I can be perfectly candid with you, I think that we need to have an open, honest conversation about why these changes are proposed before it comes to a full board vote. We owe it to our LSDMC members and district stakeholders in the interests of transparency and public engagement to be able to come to that table in good faith with researched, thought-out answers to potential questions. Because, just, just for me personally, I love to ask why. So if, if that's something that is possible, I just want to throw that out there. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report?
I have just a couple of announcements. The first is to acknowledge our new chief operating officer, Scott Adams. We're very excited and happy to have him with us. Today is day three for him. He had a very exciting day on Monday. Baptism by fire. I think it's also important for everyone to know that our students who went to New Taipei City will be coming back to Cincinnati on Saturday. They were gone for two weeks. And so I attended a picnic with them before they left, and they were all extremely excited. They are, they were in New Taipei for two weeks with some other suburban district students, and it was, it was really good to see all these kids mingle together, and they were very excited. We also had our Leadership Institute last week. So Susan Bunty, our assistant superintendent, kicked off a Leadership Institute, two days for all of our administrators, both central office as well as school-based. And so there was a lot of really positive feedback around that information. In addition to, when we think about talent development, one thing that we started this year were lunch-and-learn opportunities for our staff to come for an hour, have lunch, and hear an interesting person speak or interesting conversation. And for this month, we were able to, really excited about getting just. And for this month, we were able to, really excited about getting Justice Bernstein to come to Cincinnati to speak. He is the first and only justice who is blind, and he really talked about his experience and overcoming many adversities for him to accomplish all that he has accomplished. In addition to being a Supreme Court Justice, he is, he ran, I don't know how many marathons and has done a triathlon, Ironman, where he had to swim for X number of miles. I mean, imagine swimming in the dark. And so, he just talks about overcoming all of these adversities and was just really inspiring for our entire staff who attended. And then the last thing, I'd just like to report that, it's hard to believe, but next week is the end of summer school, and so we'll be ending our summer programming, and our school staff will be on a little bit of a break through the month of July, and then we'll be right back at it at the beginning of August. So, that's my report.
Thank you. I need a motion to approve the revised recommendations of the Superintendent.
So, moved.
Their second?
Second.
Discussion? I just have a question regarding the end of summer school. I think I signed up to do the summer school graduation thing, and I just, I haven't heard anything, so just, I'm sorry. I got a revised one. This is not revised? Okay. Thank you. So, the recommendations are not revised?
Okay.
Right, okay. It was a sheet that had the retirements on it, and it was highlighted, so I thought it was revised. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Davis. Okay. So, I just, I just need to be reminded indeed if I am scheduled to do that in as early as possible for a date.
Okay.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis? Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Okay, I need a motion to approve the report of the Treasurer. So, moved?
Second.
Second. Discussion? Ms. Bolton?
I thank the Treasurer for clearing a couple of things up for me, but the very first item on here, if I recall, let me find that it is, is the 700 and some thousand for crossing guards, monies for the city of Cincinnati, for them to pay their employees for doing the city's work. And I'm going to vote no on it, and I would like to know the status of the letter that we were sending to the city of Cincinnati regarding the crossing guards, and I would like to at least delay that until we know more about what we need to know.
So, Mr. Hoing is going to provide a status in terms of our communication with the city.
In terms of communication to the city, there's a draft letter that is being circulated at the administration level. It will be in your board packets on Friday for you to review, and it's ready to go.
Well, that is one board member. I really think we don't need to send them the money or have this vote yet.
Mr. Morosky?
I'm inclined to vote no on this as well. And in the letter, I don't know what that process means after that letter is sent, but certainly we're not going to know anything by July 1st, so I'm looking for some counsel or advice on what this means, because we need crossing guards. I'm not interested in paying the city's employees anymore.
So, just to follow, our contract with the city, which was agreed to eight years ago, eight and a half years ago, expires in December. So, the current draft of the letter is saying that we hope that the next contract with the city is, you know, is, recognizes that this is a shared responsibility.
I don't recall that that was the assignment.
Okay. Noted. Ms. Bates?
If it's expiring in December, why don't we just amend this to pay them through December instead of through June?
Until it's resolved.
Until it's resolved.
Yes.
If we're obligated through December per contract, let's just do what we have to do.
Ms. Bolton?
Which contract are we talking about?
One that expires in December.
What?
In six months, we're saying. That one? Or are you talking about the abatement agreement or the contract to pay for their employees out of our money?
Can you clarify that?
There's a 1999 abatement agreement, which references that the city will provide certain services, including school nurses, school crossing guards, school resource officers. It is, as we've discussed, unenforceable in that the city gets determined, gets to determine the level of those services, and changing the level is not a breach of that agreement. Ten years later, in 2008, we agreed to a contract with the city wherein we would reimburse the city 100% for crossing guards. There's no real quid pro quo there, we just agreed we would start paying for the full cost of the crossing guards. That agreement expires by its own terms on December 31st, 2018. The abatement agreement, which again, does not have any enforceable terms with respect to the crossing guards, expires one year later, December 31st, 2019.
So, I would.
Go ahead.
Oh, so I would request that the Treasurer amend this item to extend only until the length of the contract instead of another six months, and then it would be more, it would be acceptable to me, and I could agree to that. I couldn't agree to it as it is right now.
So, I can pull it from today's report and resubmit it from Monday night?
Tell it's been revised.
Yes, Mr. Davis?
There's still an issue in regard to Ms. Bolton's assignment, because I thought the assignment was to tell the city we didn't want to pay this anymore. I understand, I understand we're, I understand we're contractually obliged, but without saying that we don't want to pay it anymore, I'm not sure that we can.
My, yeah, I hear you. My recollection, we had a prior discussion even before today, and you asked or made an assignment, I don't know if you were asking or you were making an assignment, to develop a letter that responded to this particular topic.
Yes, it was an assignment, and it was a follow-up from Mr. Morosky's comment at the ACES meeting, where we all said we're not interested in doing this. I can live with where this went, which is, we're not going to pay after the contract. I'm not, I don't think that was the assignment, though. I think you guys showed judgment and kind of fixed the assignment in a way that may not have been able to register just how strongly some of us might feel about this, but we have to see the letter in the packet.
Yeah, the letter's not been sent.
I'm glad that we could be unanimous in our concern and just say, only for this half-year, because the contract will be up. I can live with that, but I want people to fully understand in that letter that this is, we're not playing.
I think what you're asking is that we need to clarify the status of that particular assignment, but for today, we can vote on an amended, an agreement to amend the, this particular item for purposes of.
I even like what the Treasurer said, which is to pull it and not have it, let everybody downtown know that we pulled it.
Yes. Okay. All righty. Any other questions or comments regarding the Treasurer's report? So, can we get a restatement of the motion, Ms. Bolton?
Yes. I move that we approve the revised Treasurer's report. Is that the way to say it? And then a second.
Be specific about why it's revised.
Yes, specifically to withdraw the first item as it pertains to A, Security Services A, crossing guards.
Okay. Is there a second on the revised?
Second.
Mr. Morosky? Thank you. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mr. Morosky?
Aye.
President Jones?
Aye.
Are there any inquiries or updates?
I have one update. Superintendent or administration, it might have been Mr. Mooring, and it was certainly President also at Mayerson, as a follow-up to a couple of times in the board meetings, particularly with Mr. Messer and myself, talking in terms of this room and its, as a facility, and the need for improvement in this room. There was, so the board knows, a meeting that the administration called with the Mayerson folks, and I was lucky enough to be able to attend. Also attending, I might add, was probably the region's number-one audit, audio man, if you will, George Vincent, and also our own SCPA Technical Director, Brad Jarrett. And so, the administration and Mayerson is looking into changes in this room that would make it more acceptable, both audio and lighting, and even structurally. And it sounds like it could be positive, and it could be in phases, because it would be too expensive perhaps to do it all at once, but I appreciate, I appreciated the administration moving ahead on that, and I think it'll be really helpful for us being much more engaging with the public and facilitate our meetings quite well, and make this more usable for everybody. So, that's just an update, that meeting.
Thank you. Ms. Mitchell?
Can I just do a really quick update to be able to answer a question, so it's not, it won't become an assignment? The summer graduation is August the 2nd at 5:00 in the ILC.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Morosky?
I missed kudos.
Yes, you did.
So.
Yes, you did.
So, I just. No, I'm bringing it up. I'll count it as an update to. It's an update, kudos. I spent yesterday at the Iowa facility with Mr. Mooring and his team for the first time, and I want to give kudos to everybody there, because it is crazy, the amount of things that can happen in those four buildings. They can literally make anything, and it was really, really neat to be there and to see that side of our operation that's so important to our schools. So, kudos to Mr. Mooring and everybody at the Iowa facility for what they do for us every day.
Thank you. Okay. While we're on the subject, any additional kudos? Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bolton?
I just, on behalf of the folks at College Hill, the College Hill folks are sorry to see our current Principal, Miss Battle, leave, but also are very, very excited about the new hire, and the people in Northside are very jealous of us. But I appreciate that, and again, I want to thank the administration for really working hard to make sure there's a good principal in every building.
Yes, I agree. Thank you. Are there any assignments? Mr. Morosky?
It's easy, I think, as in this, all this talk of budgeting and thinking about next year and in student achievement hearing all the good news from Dr. Rudnick with the arts and music, I would be curious if I could get just a grand total, I won't ask for a lot of detail, just a grand total of all the students that participate in fine arts in our schools. Not by school, just in total. Yep.
There you go. Okay. Thank you. Other assignments?
Thirty-six thousand.
Thirty-six thousand. Okay. Thank you. Last call, any other assignments? Okay, having no, I just want to make sure, having no other business before us, this meeting is adjourned. Well, I just, I have to ask the second time. Oh, I believe there's lunch. I believe lunch is available for you, for everybody.